The Board of Directors of Orange County or Coastal Mesa Sanitary District to order. And, um, opening items is roll call.
Director Mike Schaefer.
Here.
Director Arthur Perry.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President Robert Uden.
Here.
President James Ferman.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, public comment. Uh, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to, uh, address the board? Uh, with the subject matter. Hello.
No members of the public, Mr. President, but we did receive written public comments from Mr. Jim Mosher yesterday. And the board has received these public comments and they are also included in the board docs agenda for the record.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Uh, I guess that's it for that public comments. Uh, items of study, uh, May and June to 2020, Organic's tonnage report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is just your standard, uh, report that you receive every month. Staffs available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, anyone have a question for?
It looks like the tonnage is going up and a lot of people are home, must be weeding their yards pretty heavy.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I'd say half of the verties working on their yards as I drive through it.
Yeah, construction and all kinds of stuff.
Yeah. Okay, uh, we'll move along to, uh, the solid waste diversion report.
Another report, uh, Mr. President, as you know, this report has been temporarily delayed until, uh, staffs conduct some more research on, on the data and making sure the data is accurate.
Okay, I wasn't sure if that was current or not. Uh, item three, code enforcement officer report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Oscar Roberts is out in the field right now, so he will be giving the presentation today, but, uh, staffs available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay.
I just note, activity still. There's a lot, Jen, there's a lot of activity still on Pepper Tree from his report.
All right, you probably need to pull that down.
Okay. Uh, do you? Let's move along then to update on fats, oils and grease, the fog control program.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, staffs can request this island to be, uh, postponed and put on the July 27th. For the directors, uh, meeting, there was some confusion on when, uh, EEC will be giving this presentation to the board. We put it on today's agenda, but, uh, we informed the EEC to give the presentation on July 27th. So we do have presentations today. However, I do want to inform you that, uh, Mr. Moser did submit some comments regarding this item. And one of his comments, uh, regarding the fog program was to, to, uh, for staff to put, uh, the number of SSOs, um, on our website. So the public's aware of, of the number of SSOs we have and what caused the SSOs. I do want the board to know in this, in the part of that we do that. This measurements page on transparency, uh, link, uh, we update, uh, every quarter, every three months. So we have and the cause of those SSOs, so that information is already available.
Mm-hmm. So you feel that we have that part of it covered as far as, uh, transparency?
Yes, I do, Mr. President.
Uh, Scott, I have a comment on this. Um, is it, is it time to renew the WDR committee?
Uh, I don't know at this point, uh, let me, let me, let me think about that and, um, report back to the board if we need to.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause we, we have had a pretty large uptick in, uh, SSOs.
Yes.
Yeah, that's right. Um. Okay, any, any other, uh, questions or comments on that? Express, uh, number five, express communications assessment report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Nobila Guzman is going to be starting us off on this item.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't get that.
Nobila is going to be starting us off on this item. She'll be introducing, uh, Tri-Pappy Smith will be giving a presentation, but we'll start off with, uh, Nobila.
Um, let me ask you, why is it called express communications?
Uh, good morning, President Fermin and members of the board. Uh, Ryder and Jennifer with Tri-Pappy Smith can give more information as to why it's called the Express Communications Report. But in February 2020, Tri-Pappy Smith was awarded the Communication Support and Strategy RFP. The firm's work began in April and over the last two months, Tri-Pappy Smith has worked on the communications evaluation of the district. The process included a kickoff meeting, interviews with eight staff members, reviewing district policies and conducting an analysis of the district's website and various social media accounts. This was the first item in their scope of services and the total cost for the communications plan and evaluation is eighteen thousand five hundred and fifty. Attached to the staff report is the express communications assessment report for your review. Enlisted in the staff report are Tri-Pappy Smith's twelve recommendations. Today Ryder Smith, CEO of Tri-Pappy Smith and Jennifer Nentwig, Senior Business Analyst and Project Manager for this contract will be providing a presentation on their findings and they will be available to answer any questions.
Okay.
So. Oh, uh, hello everyone, hello board, thank you very much for that introduction. Um, I want to introduce myself Ryder Smith with Tri-Pappy Smith. Jen, you want to say hello real quick?
Good morning, I'm Jen Nentwig, I'm Senior Business Analyst with Tri-Pappy Smith.
And since it was a question right out the gate, let me go ahead and jump to that before Jen jumps into her presentation. We have two different offerings for communication assessments, uh, communications assessment and the express. The express version, uh, tends to take half the time. Uh, it tends to be about forty percent less in cost. Um, and that's achieved through reducing the total number of interviews that we conduct and, uh, having a more tightly defined scope as well as limiting some of the, um, documentation we produce. So instead of ending up with like an eighty-page report, you end up with a shorter report. Given the, um, budget that was outlined by the, the district and also the timeline that, uh, we all agreed we wanted to operate on. Um, it was kind of deemed during the process that the express communications assessment would get us, would be the best bang for the buck for the district and be most cost-effective and would also get us the output that we needed to begin the engagement work that we're starting with you all.
Thank you.
Right, so then with that, I can jump into our presentation. Alani, if you don't mind sharing the slides. And Alani, do you have the PowerPoint by chance? There we go. All right, thank you so much. Um, so as Nobila mentioned, my name is Jen Nentwig, Tri-Pappy Smith Senior Business Analyst and I'm joined this morning by Ryder, you already heard from, um, Tri-Pappy Smith President and CEO. And this morning I'll be presenting the findings of our express communications assessment and both Ryder and I will be answering any questions you may have. Next slide. So why we are here, um, first I'd like to share some background on the process. As Nobila mentioned, um, Tri-Pappy's, or the, the district engaged Tri-Pappy Smith to help improve communications and marketing in order to increase community awareness of district programs and services and ultimately to drive progress toward achieving the district's goals, which I know is very important to you all as laid out into your strategic plan. And that includes in the solid waste diversion goal of achieving seventy-five percent. So with that picture of you in mind, the district engaged Tri-Pappy Smith for an express communications assessment to objectively review and monitor your existing use of communication channels, including social media, print materials, videos and other communication methods. Tri-Pappy Smith reviewed all the major existing platforms in the general market for communications within the district service area. Today I'm here to identify some areas that represent opportu- opportunities to improve and I'm also happy to highlight improvements that are already being implemented actually by your staff with the support of the Tri-Pappy Smith team. Next slide, please. For the assessment process, this gives a brief glimpse into the process we executed over the course of several months beginning in early April. We conducted a kickoff meeting on April 6th with District Clerk and PIO Nolani Midemway, Management Analyst Two Gina Tarronio, Management Analyst One Nobila Guzman, and Office Specialist Angela Kalunga. We then conducted interviews during the week of April 6th through April 10th with General Manager Scott Carroll, District Clerk and PIO Nolani Midemway, Administrative Services Manager Diana Bojarski, Management Analyst Two Gina Tarronio, Management Analyst One Nobila Guzman, Engineering Technician Baogong, Administrative Assistant Tanisha Tingling, and Office Specialist Angela Kalunga. We then conducted analysis of your existing social media accounts, website and email platform and coordinated with staff to gather and confirm facts. We developed a forty-six page report with specific action steps and twelve recommendation areas. We provided a first draft on May 29th of 2020 and a final draft was provided on June 15th. Next slide, please.
Yeah, let me switch over to a different file. I think that, oh, no, that's not the one. Sorry. I guess that is, never mind.
Okay, and when we think about why this type of express communications assessment matters, it comes back to why communication matters for local government. Local government is the form of government that is closest to the people and is often the only point of civic engagement for constituents in a given year. It is also on average the most trusted form of government in America. But the district is a unique public agency in that the service it provides is largely out of sight, out of mind. And unlike a city, the district has less direct contact with, with residents and therefore fewer opportunities to market the district's programs and services. In order to achieve the district's goals and implement your strategic plan, the district must effectively communicate with residents to help them stay informed of district programs and services. Next slide, please. Tri-Pappy Smith's communication assessment process begins with data by looking at the numbers. On this slide, you can see a snapshot from March 31st, 2020 of the district's existing audience size on social media. The number of followers and subscribers you have on each major social network and the MailChimp email platform as well. These numbers represent the customers you are currently reaching through your existing communications. Remember these numbers when you go to the next slide where you'll see numbers related to your potential reach. So next slide, please. On this slide, you can see your potential audience. The number one hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred is based upon data in the district's RFP. Um, that's your service area population. And the number seventy thousand is based upon approximately sixty percent of adult, the adult population being on Facebook per the latest Pew Research Center data on social media adoption rates. So there are tens of thousands of Facebook users who live and or work in the service area and benefit from your services. We like to show this comparison between the numbers from the last slide and this slide because it gives you an idea of how much further the district could extend the reach of your content once it focuses on reaching residents and customers as a priority. Next slide, please. To that point, we like to share this math equation where content times distribution equals impact. We know that the district has a lot of helpful information or content to share about the service it provides to the service area, but we saw in the numbers that the district has a relatively small following on social media and the district does minimal advertising on Facebook or other digital platforms. If the distribution effort is relatively small, then the impact will also be small. That is where we are coming in to help the district improve the impact of your communication efforts. Next slide, please. So before we delve into the detailed list of recommendations and action steps, here's a list of some summarized observations. Um, as of the report being developed, the district does not currently rely upon many written communication-related policies and practices and there was no central plan at the time, um, or calendar to coordinate plan and track communication-related efforts. There's an opportunity to improve direct communications with residents via digital platforms, particularly via email. The district website had not been updated in several years and website metrics had not been frequently reviewed and assessed. And while a large cohort of the district's customers speak Spanish and informal processes for translations are currently in place, there's no current defined process for when language translation services are required. And the district brand is not currently codified in an official style guide for employee reference while developing content for digital or print production. Next slide, please. And now we'll dig into the actual recommendations. I'll walk you through each recommendation and explain the action steps associated with each. So the first recommendation is to improve government relations. The district shares a common audience with government officials who serve Orange County, the city of Costa Mesa and the city of Newport Beach. County and city officials tend to work closely together and have established relationships. The district would benefit substantially from establishing stronger relationships with local government officials. To do so, we recommend developing a directory with contact information for all government officials who serve Orange County, the city of Costa Mesa and the city of Newport Beach and update the directory as necessary and create a list of government associations which district board members may join to gain access to regularly attend meetings and events that other local government officials attend. This first recommendation aligns well with the strategies that the district partnerships objective in the most recent strategic plan. And so we look forward to working with staff to advance this recommendation as part of your overarching strategy. The second recommendation is to regularly analyze available metrics. The district should consider regularly analyzing and reporting on available website and social media data to gather insights and improve communication efforts. Staff currently provides a high-level quarterly social media report as part of the district's performance management, or sorry, performance measurement program. And we plan to help staff optimize the report to include additional metrics. To do so, we recommend to plan to analyze and report on available metrics on a regular basis and we actually will be providing a monthly metrics report to staff as part of our engagement. Um, we recommend to determine key metrics to report on regularly to optimize the district's Google Analytics account, ensure quality data is retrieved, to consider adding a survey, um, with a newsletter that captures data about how often what information is most beneficial, et cetera. And staff have actually already implemented this recommendation as well, um, with a link to a short five-question survey included in the summer edition of the Living Green Newsletter. And lastly, for this recommendation, we recommend discussing metric reports across departments to develop actionable content strategy steps. The third recommendation is to improve media relations. The district can benefit from establishing relationships with key contacts at the Daily Pilot and the Orange County Register, the two main media outlets covering news about the district. Action steps for this recommendation include determining the main contacts at each media outlet responsible for covering news about the district, particularly the Daily Pilot and the Register, assigning a specific staff member to be responsible for maintaining relationships with those media contacts and distributing press releases, providing an official self-introduction via email or phone call and determine each contact's preferred method for receiving press releases, reading the media contacts news articles to become familiar with them and their writing style, ensuring district press releases are in line with the media contacts writing style and shared in the media contacts preferred format, regularly reviewing and updating media contact lists and updating press release distribution accordingly and ensuring prompt and timely response to questions and requests from media contacts. Next slide, please. Okay. Recommendation four is to optimize email distribution, including a potential hybrid e-newsletter. To best reach its diverse audience members, the district should increase and improve its use of emails. To do so, we recommend to begin importing new residents' email addresses into the email management system. And we're aware that this is an effort that staff has actually already begun working on. Um, we recommend to develop email templates for the various types of emails regularly distributed, such as event announcements, to develop a survey to give existing readers and customers the option of opting into an e-newsletter version rather than a print version. Um, this is an idea moving forward that could potentially, um, save the resources associated with a solely print newsletter, so we're excited about that. Um, develop an email template for that possible e-newsletter version of Living Green and then based upon survey data and customer preferences, implement the possible hybrid model of distributing the newsletter via both print and email. And then recommendation five is to optimize your social media strategy. So as the district's social media audience grows, it is necessary to integrate an official social media strategy to ensure communication efforts via social media are effective. So to do so, we recommend defining the district's goals and objectives for your existing social media platforms, which include Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, YouTube and LinkedIn, regularly reviewing and discussing social media metrics as we've talked about previously, um, develop a social media content calendar to identify upcoming communications opportunities, optimize social media platforms to make use of beneficial platform features and regularly check for optimization opportunities, establish a budget for social media advertising to increase reach within the district service area and we're already in coordination with your staff on that. Complete Facebook authorizations to minimize issues with boosting posts. And the boosting will give you the opportunity to reach those unreached population, um, members discussed earlier, and we've actually confirmed with staff that the process of having your authorization set up has been completed since the assessment report. And lastly on this item, uh, we recommend to continue to pursue the ability to use Nextdoor. Recommendation six is to optimize the website. So there are several optimization opportunities on the district website to ensure it remains the district's primary digital tool for disseminating information while offering a user-friendly experience. To do so, we recommend reorganizing the sub-pages listed in the top navigation menu to ensure the general public can easily and quickly find the information they're seeking, updating the popular links listed below the top navigation menu to match the top pages listed in Google Analytics, regularly reviewing which pages are most popular per data in Google Analytics to continue to prioritize top pages, updating the homepage slider to show no more than six slides at a time and increase the amount of time that each slide is shown, requesting that Joomla, your, um, content management software platform, update the current Flavicon, the default logo that you see when you go to the website with the custom Flavicon of the district logo. And this is another recommendation that your staff has since implemented. And then lastly on this item, once the district has a brand style guide, updating the website design to ensure it properly reflects the district's official brand and incorporates modern design elements. Next slide, please. Okay, recommendation number seven is to establish formal policies. Managing communications efforts is easier when an organization has established policies to guide its effort. Established policies also provide potential legal protections. The district should update and establish certain key policies for communications. The action steps we recommend for this include working with HR and legal as applicable to develop a media policy, a privacy policy and update your existing social media policy. The existing social media policy, um, that was in place only addressed employees of social media and an updated policy should also include guidelines for public interaction on district-managed accounts. And since this report, staff has drafted an updated social media policy and we are working together on the review and fine-tuning of that policy. And we also recommend adopting policies and ensuring all staff members know where they and adding the social media policy and the privacy policy to the website and ensure each social media site links to the social media policy. Recommendation eight is to provide staff with training. The district's communications programs would benefit from training staff on new communication skills and improving their existing skills. Providing training is part of Tri-Pappy Smith's engagement with the district and we plan to conduct quarterly training sessions as well as ongoing coaching related to communications. To do so, the action steps we recommend are to train staff on collecting website and social media analytics, train staff on basic elements of design and best practices for using design tools such as Canva and train staff on basic elements of photography and how to use the camera that the district already owns. Recommendation nine is to address Spanish language goals. So data suggests a high proportion of Spanish speakers in Costa Mesa and while some content is currently distributed in Spanish, the district does not currently have official guidelines in place for when communications are being translated. To address this recommendation, we've outlined the following action steps in our report. Schedule a policy discussion with board members and staff about the priority to execute communications in English and Spanish, determine additional costs associated with executing communications in Spanish and develop a policy that provides guidelines for staff to determine which communications must be translated into Spanish. Next slide, please. Recommendation ten is to develop a brand style guide. So the district currently have an official brand style guide that outlines the organization's brand. A style guide is a key tool for maintaining consistency across communications collateral, including websites, media and newsletters. We're aware that this is now actually a strategy outlined in the strategic plan that we look forward to working with staff on implementing this requirement. The specific action steps that would be part of that style guide would include determining the district's official logo and specific guidelines for how the logo can be used, including varying sizes, colors and positions, establishing the district's official brand colors and limits to variations that can be used, determining the district's official fonts and provide guidelines on how a font can be used, developing an official style guide document that outlines all guidelines for the district's logo, colors and fonts and ensuring staff have access to the document and are familiar with the guidelines and determining a copy style guide to adhere to the associated press style guide and note any unique organizational deviations from the copy style guide. Recommendation eleven is to build a stock photo and video library. Photos and videos are two of the most powerful ways to tell a story. For the district, photos and videos are key tools for improving its communication efforts across the website, social media platforms and newsletters. Action steps for this recommendation include establishing a central location where photos and videos will live that all staff can access, developing a shot list of photos and videos that would be beneficial to have readily available for communications. And we actually brainstormed the shot list during our recent kickoff of our nine-month engagement and schedule a day to capture photos and videos of all items in that shot list. And this is an item that Tri-Pappy Smith will complete as part of our nine-month engagement moving forward. Um, also as part of this, encourage field-level staff to take photos and videos of projects in progress, completed projects and other tasks for which they're responsible and regularly note and take inventory of any missing photos and videos that would benefit the organization's communication efforts. And the last recommendation, recommendation twelve, is to increase branding on physical assets. So physical assets such as waste bins are the district's most visible presence in communities. The district should consider increasing branding on physical assets to raise awareness of the district among stakeholders. To do so, we recommend considering increasing the visibility and recognizability of the district's building and considering coordinating with CRNR to add the district's branding elements to waste bins. So those are all of our recommendations in the report and if we have any questions you may have.
I have a question. I have a comment too. Can I go in? Okay, thank you. First of all, thank you so much for this presentation. It's a good one and, uh, we appreciate what we've got in front of us, I'm sure. It hits upon a lot of things that we are really involved in and want to know what's going on. But at the same time, I know we just chose two directors to kind of come up with you as a, or, as a, well, organization and, uh, I think you did a fine job. Now, getting into it more, I'm looking at all the recommendations, everything you've said, and I don't know when you've talked to, uh, the directors. Ask them their opinions on different things, aside from you two who got us here, which is great, and I appreciate that. But, you know, there are a lot of things that, um, we could comment on and you don't know how we feel on different things, I'm sure. But as I look at the, um, recommendations and what you have, you've got staff down a lot, but you never have the directors down for anything of training or, or understanding. And, um, you know, you have the good, um, comments in there of who we would like to see communication-wise and this and that. But at the same time, there's nothing, it's just an overall. How are we going to come back and how are we going to talk about this? What's the next step?
If I could, uh, if I could speak to that question, I appreciate you raising the point in the query. So, um, a couple, first, very fair comment about, uh, director feedback. And I want to emphasize one thing at the outset, which is this is clearly a partnership. We're here to deliver for the district. Um, we obviously work through staff to make that happen on a day-to-day basis and, uh, have some level of expectation, I think very reasonable. That staff is familiar with, um, some of the ideas from the directors, but most importantly, this is the start of an ongoing process and engagement and, um, these are outlines and recommendations from, uh, before we have an opportunity to further talk with you as directors and to get your additional feedback on it. So by no means do I view our kickoff on this engagement as the stop point for, um, engagement with the directors. I mean, facilitated through staff, we would very much love to engage and have conversations with each of you as directors on your thoughts and ideas around communication strengths and weaknesses and things of that nature. I strongly suspect staff, um, has a good pulse on where that's at, given the quality of the team that we spoke to when we did this, uh, process. But by no means, I mean, I always love to hear directly from, from individuals like yourself about what you see as the vision or the issues or the challenges, um, particularly since, you know, you have to run and get elected, right? So, uh, there's always some grassroots efforts you have going on out there that are particularly helpful for us. Plus you hear directly from the community, I drop them about in the grocery store, walking down the street, at the dog park, what have you. Plus you hear directly from the community and dropping about in the grocery store, walking down the street, at the dog park, what have you. So we are completely open and excited to hear that feedback and to make sure that guides our overall strategy. One other thing I want to emphasize too, is that as part of our overall evaluation process and looking at not only the feedback we got from staff, but also. Bringing together our PowerPoint deck, Jennifer, well, we actually monitored and watched your strategic planning discussions that you guys have had over several meetings recently. Which included discussions about your communication strategic plan and your strategic goals that you had. So we actually had an opportunity, although not a direct conversation with you, we had an opportunity to hear from the directors and some of their communication goals and ideas. As a result of listening to that. So in some ways, we were trying to be efficient by taking advantage of the time that was spent during those conversations to hear from them all and understand what some of your concerns were. And certainly I would also just finally say, if you feel there's something missing entirely from here and that we had a total blind spot on something, I would a hundred percent welcome any feedback you have on that. And happy to address that with a question or a comment or take it back to the drawing board in terms of some other area we need to better explore in the course of this assessment.
Well, thank you. Actually, you know, I really appreciate, you know, all you're saying. But at the same time, I thought we were going to all get together and this is not a normal life now, so we have to adjust. And I know that for a study session, I was thinking we're all going to get together, we're all going to be able to talk on this, which made sense as a study session. And now we're all split up and we're all trying to understand, you know, what's going on. And, and with masks on us and everything, it's kind of difficult. But at the same time, I'm still trying to figure out step two in this. You never told me what's going to happen now.
So step two, meaning where do we go from here with the district?
Yes.
Great question. So we at least have, there was an RFP process that I know you're familiar with. And there was a scope that was requested in that process and we outlined with a plan for that scope in terms of all of our ongoing work to help supplement and support. The communications team at the district to get through and execute and implement. Several of those elements were already baked into our scope of work before we started this communications assessment, because there are just certain fundamentals that exist around. Phone calls and a touch base and coordination planning and some media or not, but some article development or some photography services and things like that to help supplement the team, all of which were kind of baked in. But the, the nuance here is we shift some of that focus or shifts where that we're taking messaging. Based upon guidance from district staff and from you as a board of directors, giving guidance to the response and plan. So right now, our vision is to have this conversation a day with the board and receive feedback on the outlined ideas and concepts and recommendations that we have. And then to transition that into ongoing work product that we begin delivering and coordination with staff. So that hopefully you all see results start to manifest in the next couple of months from these changed impacts. And, and ultimately see an impact that, you know, for example, we might want to see it show up in the next biannual survey that you do when we have certain critical questions that come up. And see that there's been progress on understanding who the district is and what you're all about or some of the programs that you offer. Or we see it show up in some of the diversion rate data that we're, that we're monitoring that you as I know is a core strategic focus for you all.
You know, this is Jim Ferryman. I agree with, with my colleague to a degree, but. That was a lot of information to absorb in a very short time and I would like to have, you know, a, a copy of a hard copy of it to, to reflect on. Because it's, you know, like I say, it's, that was a lot to absorb and. A lot of it sounded good, but, but you know, there, I think I personally need to sit down and go over the thing with myself.
I would like you to.
So I, and I would urge you to please do so, I, because obviously. Going back to our formula of content times distribution equals impact, we've, we feel we put together a lot of really good content. In fact, I've heard comments that there's some good stuff here. But the more people that read it, the more impact it can have, right? So along those lines, I believe it was, in fact, I see it on the screen here, it is, if you haven't had a chance, it's available in totality. Both, I think our presentation deck and the actual document are available for your perusal, of course.
Yep, I'm sorry.
Somebody email it to me. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Jim, this is Mike.
Yeah.
Jen, thank you very much. I, I just had a, some thoughts on point number, your recommendation number three regarding print media and things like that. With, with the. Meteoric decline in people getting newspapers, is it worth spending a lot of time with those folks now? I understand that their, their social media impact and their online impact is, is where we need to be going. At least I think that's where we need to be going. But the fact that maybe we could use some of that energy from the, the print media to another recommendation. I'm big on branding, that's part of my way of living. So with all of these recommendations, I'm sure you have degrees of importance. And to me, that focusing a lot on print media doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, I'll hop in and then Ryder can chime in too. I know I've heard Ryder say a lot that it is time for organizations to do more telling of their own story. So if we were to prioritize, you're right, I think we would prioritize having the district have a strong brand, have a strong message and have the ability to tell its own story. If it were a choice between that and reaching out to the press. So there is still some value in that as far as reaching out to the press, but we would prioritize probably the ability to tell your own story.
I, I thank you. I appreciate you saying that.
If I could just take, take that point to make a, I, well, I, at least what I think is an interesting comment, which is why I'll share it, but. You know, it used to be that when you ran a local government agency, you would try to get to know the local newspaper editor. And when something would come up, you'd be able to call them up and tell them what's going on and have a healthy conversation and a dialogue. And then they could dispatch a reporter to cover the issue and have some background and effectively communicate to the public what the facts are, right? I don't need you to carry water for me, but just carry the facts, please. That, that obviously, as you noted, the dramatic decline in readership and subscription newspapers has created this void of how we get information. And this goes into a much broader societal conversation about news, where people get their news, how they get their news. But one of the outgrowings has been the rise on particularly platforms like Facebook of these local groups. So like here in Tustin, it's Tustin Buzz. And in other places, it can be called, you know, you're from Costa Mesa if. And so you'll get these very active local community groups that are basically gossip circles or beyond. I mean, it could be legit like, hey, I got a garage sale going or hey, I lost my dog, help me find my dog. But those platforms have risen up with significant involvement and backing by the public. And the interesting thing in that situation is those groups are generally formed by a random citizen or maybe somebody who's got a particular mission in life and they become the editor of that group. And when you are the editor, the group manager on a Facebook group that has 18,000, 20,000 followers as our groups do here in Tustin and as some of the groups do in Costa Mesa. That's a very powerful position. So in many ways, that local newspaper editor has been replaced by the Facebook group manager in your local Costa Mesa areas. And to some extent, when I look at what my strategy is, one of those strategies is go talk to them, right? Take them to coffee. They are now that new editor who on a digital worldview is, is, has a little bit more control of the reins of how information is getting distributed in your own backyard.
Yeah, Ryder, I appreciate you saying that. And I participate in several neighborhood groups here in my area. The problem with a political entity as we are contributing is so many of these neighborhood. And I like the way you said gossip, because that's a lot of what it is. But so many of these neighborhood chat groups, if they see anything political or from any kind of political body. They, they think we're trying to take them hostage and they cut you off. So I, I like your idea of getting to the editors, that, that's really well said. I mean, that's where we need to get, get these contacts, whether it's on Nextdoor or, you know, Mesa Verde North Neighbors or whatever the group is. And I, I appreciate that. I think that's where in the future, we're going to get the word out much more than me sitting at breakfast, reading the LA Times or whatever. So I, I appreciate you saying that and, and I would like to see some effort from us in doing that.
Okay.
On the, on the newspaper issue, I think. We're still reaching an enormous audience in, in the, you know, with the, it's not hard copy so much anymore, although I take both. But I also do digital subscriptions to, you know, a number of newspapers. So I, you know, the, I, I think the newspapers still play an important part. It's, and it's a, it's a, it's an expanding audience that do it digitally rather than, you know, read the paper hard copy. But the thing that I'd like, the thing that I'm interested in is the, the email. Expanding our email base, you know, I'm past president of the Friends at the Library and we had, we have four or 500 members and half of them get our newsletter digitally. And the city has a database and Mesa has a database and Provaloski or the electorate, the registrar has a database. And, and you know, I think we, we could dramatically expand. You know, our, our engagement with the communities and, you know, Facebook and other social media platforms. To get the word out. You know, my neighbors have recently, you know, told me they read the newsletter and they have comments on it and they may not understand it. But I think the news, the newsletter in our recent survey was the number one. Method that, you know, people had contact with us. I may be wrong on that, but you know, the, the focus, I think it was the newsletter that, you know, generated the most interest. At least in the, in this, you know, and, and we did a pretty big survey, but. So I, I'm very interested in that. I'm also very interested in the way you do it because, you know, the friends at the library would like to increase their membership. You know, on the backs of what others are doing.
I had a, I had a comment on this community resource guide. Have you heard of that?
I'm afraid not.
Okay, I gave Scott a copy. It's, it's like almost like a magazine type of thing. But it's really interesting because it's a, it says all the community research guide, everything you can follow. And you might look into that because that's a thought too.
So it, it sounds like it may be one of these local publications where they go and it's mostly sponsored by local businesses doing, you know, marketing sales. And they put some local stories in and they issue some of these magazines. Does that sound like, maybe they do it on a semi annual basis?
I don't know.
Okay, well, we'll definitely look into it. I think, you know, we, that's the kind of feedback and localized information that we're always interested in. Being familiar with. And if I could comment on Director Uden's comment, the. The email, I guess, I have, I place a huge value on email, right? Email to me remains the killer app of the internet. And there's a huge value to know that I have an email address of somebody I deliver services to, right? A resident who's either having their trash picked up by us or their, their, their wastewater shot off for processing. And, and, and really like, I, I put a monetary value on that, right? To me, it's worth 20 bucks. If I could pay $20 and get a resident's email address, that means I can email them to infinity and assuming it's decent content, they don't unsubscribe. I will save on postage. I will save $20 average duration of a resident in Costa Mesa, right? But I also get much more frequent touchpoints and the vast majority of people, you know, if you go to sign up for a Facebook account, if you go to sign up for Instagram, if you go, like, if you go to sign up for these things, you have to have an email address. So it's always assumed that that's like the dial tone baseline of anybody on the internet is you have some form of an email address.
Yeah.
So for those reasons, I just, I, and you get analytics, right? I can tell you who opened the email. I can tell you what they saw and like, what was their interest level in that email? What was the general open rate on the email? Much more informative and the fundamental, but the fundamental point exists, and I think this is reaffirmed by your notation, that the newsletter is the. Was kind of the, the highest perceived source of information on the district. It's because it's where you spend the most amount of money on distribution, right? You spend a ton of money on print and on mailing to get it out to all those people. And so it's perhaps not surprising where you, hopefully it's a good correlation that where you spend the most money is also where you're seeing the biggest distribution impact, right? And so you're, it's kind of fulfilling the, the formula. The question is, how can we more cost effectively achieve that as we shift to a more digital, digital approach?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any other?
We received.
Any other questions?
Yes, President Fermer, we received public comment from Mr. Mosher on this item, if I may read them, please.
Please.
He had several random comments on page seven. Titled CMSD by the numbers under Facebook potential reach. Zip code 92660 is largely not in CMSD's area and a small part of 92663 is. As to the 2018 election turnout, I can think of no basis for the assumption that people vote on average for 2.5 candidates. According to page. 2,372 of the OC Registrar's archive statement of votes for the November 2006, November 6, 2018 general election. Of the 58,832 registered voters living within the CMSD boundary, 42,466 cast ballots. Of the ballots cast, 39,338 were from Costa Mesa addresses. 2,737 from Newport Beach addresses and 391 from unincorporated county land. With four candidates, the instructions were vote for three. But on the 42,466 ballots, as reported by Tripe P. Smith, only 64,407 votes were cast. Or an average of 1.52 votes per ballot. One of many possible interpretations is that half the voters followed the instructions to vote for three. And the other half didn't feel informed or interested enough to vote at all. If that is correct, the lack of interest in the choice of CMSD leadership, even among people who vote, could be a communication problem worthy of consideration. On page 27, regarding press release distribution, the list of media contacts appear out, out of date, outdated. Faith Pino is no longer at the Daily Pilot and may have moved to the LA Times. Jeff West ceased regularly updating his once well-read A Bubbling Cauldron blog in 2017. End of comments. Thank you.
Well, those two reporters work for the Times and the Times owns the Daily Pilot. So they basically are, you know, one and the same.
What, what did Mosher's comments, the, the voting statistics, what does that have to do with us on an email outreach? I don't, I mean, he, what he's referring to is how we as candidates promote ourselves to get voted, not anything that the district can't be involved in any kind of voter persuasion or anything. So I'm not sure what validity there is with his comments.
Or the importance.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Bob.
Well, no, or the importance of them. I mean, it, you know. You know, as an engineer, I'm interested in his, you know, his statistical analysis of something, but, you know, I don't see the importance of the comment.
So if I could.
Did he read, did he read all 2,724 pages of that thing? Come up with those statistics, Bob?
I don't know.
Okay. What there is, I, I would, that was a lot of math that I would have to run back and quickly do some analysis on. I will just make a general observation. One of the reasons we look at voter participation rate in a particular local election is to understand what the core audience of people is who's actually interested enough in what's going on with the district. To be able to decide what is a reasonable audience to reach of people who are going to care, right? And it is true that on down ballot elections, they typically receive much less attention than, not much less, less attention than the up ballots. And so you will see a fall off as things move down the ballot from presidential to, right, to statewide, to congressional and then local. So, so we have some modeling on there. If there's a question on the modeling, I'm happy to revisit that and take a look. But that's why we just trying to get a sense of where's our general audience at in terms of who do we think we could. Uh, but that's why we just try to get a sense of where's our general audience at in terms of who do we think we can really reasonably reach?
Okay, uh, any other questions or comments? Well, you know, personally, uh, when, when is, when are we gonna have any, when are you planning on, on getting underway? I, I know now is the first step, but uh what's the second step and, and when's that gonna occur?
So uh, I, I will, I will defer to the Costa Mesa Sanitary District team if they want to comment on that, but our general expectation was to start now.
Yes, I can answer that. Uh, President Ferriman, this is Nabilah. The Tri Pappy Smith contract is for 12 months. It started in March, so they have nine months left of engagement. And their contract consisted of a scope of services. This assessment report was only the first one. So they will continue to work on the rest of the items in that scope of service and as well as helping the CMSD team implement these top recommendations.
Okay, uh, and as far as any more uh participation from the uh staff, or not the staff, but uh the board, uh, I guess you will get a, a report as we go along during the year about what, what kind of progress you're making.
That's correct. Staff can bring back a, a report or an update of how the contract and the scope of service, the engagement is going.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else have any question?
Mr. President, can I say something? I was thinking that uh if we get this hard copy, that we can look it over and probably have some more input to help this organization. And uh also, not only that, but that we should continue to have this on the study session with the hope that eventually we can all get together and be able to make comments and hear their progress too.
Well, maybe we ought to have a special meeting of the board to discuss, you know, after they're through it.
Yeah, I thought we were gonna have a special meeting.
Well, I would suggest that we, we get a uh quarterly update from staff and maybe uh, uh, a, you know, halfway through the project update from Tri Pappy. I had a study session.
Yeah. Uh, well, what's the, well, the board here, what, which-
One more comment, one more comment, Jim. Arlene, you can download that full report. It's on the, it was sent to you on an email. You have to, it's a long, it's a, it's a long report. I didn't download it because it's so many pages, but you can download it.
I know.
Or ask Scott maybe to download it for us, but I didn't download it.
That's fine, yeah.
Being printed right now.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Okay, well, let's everybody-
Special meeting is good.
Let's everybody review it and then we'll, we'll uh talk at the next uh board meeting. We'll put it on the agenda to, you know, give uh, give the direction. Okay, any, any, anything else? Anybody have a question on this? If not, thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate the time. And um, we're gonna move on now to uh financial condition of the Costa Mesa Sanitary District.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, this item was requested by, by the board to bring this back for discussion. Particularly, the board wanted to know what is our financial position in light of COVID-19? As you, as you are aware, uh, many cities in the county are, are struggling now with, with the pandemic. Um, struggling due to loss of revenues um that's greatly needed to provide their essential services and other services in the community. So um, the Finance Department, uh, Mark Davis, Caitlin Tran and Lou Tran put together a well presentation, show with you um basically the finances of the district and how COVID-19 has impacted uh the district. Um, and for today, after this, after the presentation discussion, really, uh, I, I encourage the board to, to give direction to the board. You know, as you'll see, we're, we're not, we're not as um, the special districts, particularly Costa Mesa Sanitary, are not um uh experiencing financial constraints like the cities are. Doesn't mean that it can't happen in the future. Uh, and so something we want to maybe consider today is, well, let's look worst case scenario. What happens if we don't receive our, our property tax, our, our assessments? Um, what's we gonna do then? You know, how much, you know, what we have in the reserves, is that enough? You know, something to consider, uh, worst case scenario. So uh, I, I look forward to that discussion today, today. Uh, but right now, I'll turn over to Mark, who will be giving the, the presentation.
Uh, Scott, I had a question. Uh, this, this, just the financial plan, uh, when was it available? It wasn't available last Friday when, when we got notice, or was it available in time? Was it available 72 hours or whatever the prescribed limit is?
No, uh, by the way, unfortunately, it was not. Um, it was, the time that Jim was posted on Friday, staff was still preparing the, the PowerPoint presentation. It, the, the PowerPoint presentation wasn't available till late, late yesterday afternoon.
Okay.
I'm gonna turn it off. It's all yours, Mark.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Um, Scott, uh, Noelani, is it okay if I go ahead and share my screen then?
Hello? Noelani?
Yes, give me one second, Mark. Let me go ahead and give you the reins.
Okay. Uh, so, we're waiting. What are we doing here?
We're, uh, Mr. Ferriman, uh, President Ferriman, we're just waiting for uh me to be able to get uh control of the uh, of the screen.
Thank you.
Okay, Mark, go ahead.
Okay, can everybody see uh the presentation up there?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, well, as Scott had mentioned, um, this process started a couple um months back, right after the pandemic. And it originally started with a discussion that uh Scott raised about um, should we consider issuing uh tax revenue anticipation notes to be able to uh fund the district? That turned into a bigger discussion than just um going into debt. So um, uh, and then at a previous board meeting, the board had asked about uh the exact same thing, the financial condition. So here we are today to, to talk uh through that. So there's lots of things that we want to be able to talk about because you need a little bit of background information about fund structure of the city, of the uh district uh as well as um uh reserves and designations, what your existing policies are. We'll touch on the condition as of uh June 30th uh at your next uh board meeting. Caitlin will be presenting the um, uh, the year-end uh budget review, but this will give you a little snapshot uh at this point in time as to where we are. Um, we'll talk about uh some financial COVID-19 impacts uh to the district. Um, and then we'll, we'll run through what some local governments are doing in response to um the situations they're in relation to COVID-19. Uh, we've got some five-year projections for you and then some historical uh information that also includes those five-year um, five-year projections. So a lot of information uh to, to go over. First of all, I wanted to just touch on the fund structure because it's important that you understand um all the funds that the district uses to uh operate and what the purpose of each fund are. Uh, you don't adopt budgets for all of these funds, but um a few, a few you do. And so we wanted to go through uh the seven funds that the district, um, the district uses. So the first fund is the general fund. This is a brand-new fund. We didn't have this fund prior to fiscal year 1920. Um, and at that point in time, an issue was raised by Mr. Mosher, actually, uh indicating that, hey, the district does receive some general property tax revenue and the general property tax revenue uh should be available for uh expenses that benefit the entire uh district. And um, and that is a, that was a true statement that he raised at that point in time. And it's always been the practice of the district up until then to use 100% or virtually all of its uh general property tax that receives and use it for rate stabilization in the, in the solid waste fund. So um, but this past year to uh really address uh that comment, we did break out a separate fund, uh, a general fund. And so the items that go into the general fund are that general property tax revenue and any investment earnings we may have on that. And then the um, um, as I mentioned, the types of things that can be used in that fund are expenditures that are for the benefit of the entire district. And right now, we uh, we make a transfer out to the um, uh, to the solid waste fund for rate stabilization. So the solid waste fund, uh, this fund accounts for all of the trash charges, the cost of managing um the refuse collection, recycling, organics, everything to do with the um, uh, the solid waste. We have a handful of revenue sources within this fund. Uh, most importantly is the annual charge that gets set each year. Uh, you have some revenue coming in from the additional container charge, uh, some investment earnings, some contributions that CRNR makes um uh to the district. And then there's other miscellaneous revenue occasion. There might be a grant that's associated uh from a solid waste perspective that we will, uh, that we will receive. Expenses going out of this fund is just provision of your solid waste services and special programs. That's it. Uh, your wastewater fund, um, it does account for the um, all the wastewater charges, your construction, maintaining the sewer lines, all the capital improvement projects associated with the um, uh, providing the wastewater services. Um, sources of revenue, again, your annual charge that you set each year, uh sewer permits, inspection fees, some investment income. And uh the expenses going out are only twofold, provision of the wastewater services as well as all of your uh wastewater capital improvement projects. Um, you do have a facilities revolving fund. Uh, this fund accounts for the fixture fees uh that are received by the district. That's important here. This fund is restricted. And um, and so we can't, we don't budget this fund and it can only be used for um facilities that were in existence at the time the charge was imposed uh or for new public facilities um that are gonna be acquired or constructed in the future, providing that they are of benefit to the people that paid those um, uh, those fixture fees. And so historically, we've only used this fund really to uh supplant other expenditures out of the solid waste and wastewater fund, most notably when we acquired the building on 19th Street. And then when we um acquired the building on um uh that we're in right now, on Pollo Reno, as well as the district yard. Each time we've depleted all the, all of the, yes, was there a question? Okay, each time we've depleted all of the funds um uh out of that, but it continues to, uh, it continues to grow uh each year. Um, and so as the district goes through and does the budget process, staff should be thinking about, is there anything that's included in this budget that meets the definition of these restricted use funds? And then you always want to use these restricted funds first, um, to the extent that, to the extent that we can. Um, we do have a sewer construction fund. It has been uh virtually inactive for a number of years. Uh, but the fund's required to be there because there may be um instances where a developer is doing a project and part of that project involves uh construction of sewer improvements or wastewater improvements. And the developers decided they don't want to actually do the construction of that. They would, they would prefer that the, uh, the district oversees the construction. It's rare that this happens, but um if it does, then uh we would accept a deposit from the developer for the amount of that um uh improvement. And then when the district uh constructs the improvement, we would pay for that improvement uh out of this, um, out of this fund. As best I can remember, it's happened one time since about the mid 90s. So it's a, it's a rare thing, but it's out there. It's used. It has a zero balance right now. Um, you do have an asset replacement fund. This fund was set up um a few years back and it really accumulates uh money for the replacement of capital assets, assets that uh exclude infrastructure. And uh this particular fund receives its revenues uh each year through rental rates it charges on existing capital projects. So when the district purchases a vehicle or a vector truck, um, the fund that um is acquiring that asset pays a rental rate over time, which is really like the depreciation of that asset, pays a rental rate over time to this asset replacement fund so that we can accumulate money uh to be able to purchase a replacement asset um uh in the future. And then uh finally, uh, your asset management fund. Um, uh, this also was established a few years back with an initial uh $5 million uh investment. Uh, it's to be used only for uh CIP and emergency work. There is an, a portion of the out, annual charge each year that um that is received in the wastewater fund gets sent over to the asset management fund. Then the asset management fund transfers back to the wastewater fund. Uh, those funds that are necessary to fund the current year, um, uh, the current year CIP. That $5 million mark was a uh target mark when we first set up the, first set up the fund, but there's nothing that says it has to stay at $5 million. It's just been a board practice that if we go below that $5 million, we should work diligently to get that back up to $5 million for, for future use. So tho- those are your uh seven funds that are currently um in use by the district. Uh, next, I want to talk just briefly about your existing reserves and designations. And uh right now, there are, there's one reserve that's uh included in the operations code and that's the operating reserve. And uh per code, that is set at 30% of, uh, for the solid waste fund, it's set at 30% of the operations budget. And for the wastewater fund, it is set at 25% of the operations budget. And so uh what happens each year, at the beginning of each year, when the budget gets adopted, um, finance will calculate what that um reserve amount is and then we will adjust the reserve on the books and it will stay that amount for the entire uh rest of the fiscal year. And then when the next budget gets adopted, it gets adjusted to whatever the new, uh, the new budget is. Um, from an accounting perspective, there is an additional reserve in uh your financial statements and that's reserved for capital outlay. And so uh the value of any uncompleted projects, we end up showing as a reservation of your uh net position on your financial statements. Uh, it's not in the operations code, but per accounting standards, we need to do that. And then you do have one designation that was um established some time ago and, and a designation is really only something that appears on uh this particular one appears on the investment report. It's not restricted by any legal uh requirement. It's not considered a reserve. Uh, you can change those designations at any point in time that you want to, but uh because the district's revenue only comes in um, in a couple of large tranches each year, um, it was decided that for the dry period that we call it, from June through October, we would calculate on a annual basis what the budget is for those five months and set that aside or designate that as cash that's needed for that, uh, that revenue dry period. The only place you see that is on the monthly um, uh, the monthly investment report. It's not in the financial statements. It's not from an accounting perspective. Uh, it doesn't um, not allowed to be uh reported like that, but it does show up on the investment uh report per your direction. Uh, going back up just to the operating reserve, just for a minute, that reserve, because it's set by code, can only be accessed in um certain circumstances that are spelled out in, in the code when there's an emergency or other types of um needs to where it takes action of the board to be able to access those um- Needs to where it takes action of the board to be able to access those um, uh those reserve funds. Any questions on reserves or designations before we uh move on?
Any questions?
Okay, just taking a look at uh your three funds that you budget, you budget the general fund, the solid waste fund. And the um wastewater fund at June thirtieth, where we think things are going to end up and this is. This is pre-year-end uh closing, pre-audit, so these numbers will change. This is just a snapshot right now as best we can um. Uh as best finance can estimate, uh given what they um, they know with potential bills coming in. So the, the general fund, uh you adopted a budget of three hundred twenty thousand dollars uh for the year. And you didn't change that at all during the year. Uh and you had approved transferring all of that out, all of those funds out. Two hundred and seventy thousand getting transferred out to the solid waste fund and fif- fifty thousand getting transferred out to the wastewater fund. So the full three twenty was uh transferred out. We do believe that uh actual revenue is going to come in a little bit more than that. So at the end of the day, there will be a, a small little surplus that I believe finance would be. Uh coming back to you on to have a uh, a fiscal year twenty twenty-one transfer out uh to get rid of that balance. And, and move it over to the solid waste fund for a rate stabilization. Um so again, this, this fund was set up um really kind of as to show that there are general. Operating revenues available to the district. You could decide you wanted to record some other types of general. Expenditures here if you did, but at present, there's nothing like that that's accounted for in the fund. Purely the money's coming in and we're sending it all out. Um primarily to the solid waste fund for rate stabilization purposes. For the solid waste fund, uh the budget you adopted at the beginning of the year um. Was uh six point five 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 million. Uh you had some adjustments, budget adjustments during the year that. Uh increased the budget to six point five eight two million. Actually, actual expenditures are probably going to come in a little bit less than that, uh at six point four six million. Um revenues are much less than that at five point four six million, so we're looking at a um. A loss, if you will, in that fund, but it was a planned loss of nine hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars. This takes into account the first year of the um solid waste increase. It happened in nineteen twenty, it was about four point one percent. Uh rate increase and, and for the next five years, you'll be having um increases uh each year. Uh but it was planned that we were going to dip into uh our excess funds sitting there of about nine hundred and some odd thousand dollars. You can see the transfer coming in for rate stabilization. So at the end of the day, we're going to be about uh seven hundred and forty thousand dollars that we're going to uh dip into the fund. Uh for the uh, for the year. On the wastewater fund standpoint. Um you did have an original budget of six point one million that increased to nine point six million. Some of that increase was due to your. Uh a large part of the increase was due to the carryover of capital improvements that happens. Uh year over year, but there were some other items that got added to the budget uh for the year. Um you will have um. Um income, net income for the year of about three point one million and primarily all of that is attributable to. The uh just can't getting capital projects done. There's capital projects that are budgeted year in and year out, they get added to. Uh the list of capital projects, but uh they've never been able to be completed. Uh they always get carried over uh year, year over year. And so at the end of this year, it looks like that there's going to be about three point one million. Um depending upon if some more bills come in that will ask to be carried over to the uh, to the twenty twenty-one um fiscal year. So that's a quick snapshot then of where you were at as of um June thirtieth for the three funds that you budget. Uh switching gears now to COVID nineteen impacts to the district. A- as Scott had mentioned, uh this district is uh really pretty insulated from any financial. Uh impacts, just by the way that you have the ability to um set your annual charge every year. Put that annual charge on the tax roll and then uh get that annual charge uh in to fund your current year uh operations. Um there is a potential shift for uh receipt of those annual charges or property taxes and what I mean by that is. With the downturn in the economy, there uh very well uh may be. Um shifting of. Citizens paying their property taxes of which the annual charge is added to. Of them not paying it or delaying paying it, it getting, and then your eventual receipt of that revenue will get shifted down the road. Now, way back in um. Right around the bankruptcy time, uh the county of Orange allowed um. For cities and special districts within the county to opt into what was referred to as a, a teeter plan. For receipt of property taxes. And this, this teeter plan. If you opted in, said that uh regardless if the property taxes were paid year in and year out, you were going to receive. Your annual um annual property taxes every year. There would be no delay in receipt regardless if the. Uh property owner paid their property tax or not. If you did not opt in uh to the teeter plan, then you would continue to receive your property taxes just as you always have. And when uh property owners that were delinquent. Uh finally got around to paying their property taxes, you would receive the property tax at that time. Plus, you would receive penalties and interest on that uh, on that tax. Way back in ninety-three, ninety-four, because of the way the district's revenue uh came in and because of the fact that. Uh you could set your charge year in and year out. Um the district did not opt into the uh, into the teeter plan and I still believe that that was a good decision. Uh today, you, you have the ability then to uh, you will get all of your property tax at some point in time. The latest it would go is if uh, if a property owner stops paying property tax. And uh the property ends up getting foreclosed on through the sale of the foreclosure, you'll get your property tax at that point in time. Plus, we're going to get additional revenue. Uh and so because the district has had a healthy financial condition. Uh years prior to that and all the way since that period of time, even through the two thousand eight. Uh market downturn, it's been a good decision to not be a, not opt into the, to the teeter program. I am of the opinion that interest rates will stay down for uh, for some period of time. In March, when uh the governor made the, uh the pandemic happened. Um rates uh tanked at that point in time. You know, we were earning uh. Close, we were getting close to getting back to two percent on our funds and um. Uh today, when I'm trying to uh replace uh an investment that has matured or called. If I'm, if I'm lucky enough, if I go out five years, I'm super lucky if I'm getting one half of one percent on a five-year um investment. Brokers, everybody in markets are kind of indicating this is going to be the, the norm for some time to come, so. Uh we had a little period that, like I said, we got close to two percent. I'm not thinking we're going to get anywhere near that. For uh, for years, for a few years to come. Uh from a financial perspective, and I know, I know Scott has shared with you all the different things that the district has done. In response to COVID nineteen, not just financial, but um as far as hours, as far as sanitizing and things like that. But, but purely from a financial perspective, uh two things have happened. One, uh the code enforcement officer was furloughed for a period of one month. And all the code enforcement activities were suspended and the uh just recently, the general manager opted for no salary increase for this next fiscal year. Those are the only financial impacts right now um in response to the um. Uh COVID nineteen that the district uh has. Switching over to uh other local governments that are not like you. Um where they are dependent upon sales tax and, and more dependent on property tax or dependent on transient occupancy tax, really talking. Cities here. Uh the types of things that cities are, are doing to address. The big shortfall that they're having in their budgets are, they're doing layoffs, they're furloughing people. Um they're deferring any type of cost of living adjustment or they're deferring any types of salary increases or merit increases. Uh they're freezing non-essential uh vacant positions. Um they're doing across the board types of forced reduction of expenditures, going back to each of the departments and asking them to. Cut their budgets by X percent, letting the departments figure out where best to uh make those cuts. Uh they're deferring any kind of maintenance activities or infrastructure improvements and deferral of their cost, uh their capital improvement programs. I think that, again, the way that uh the Costa Mesa Sanitary District is structured. You don't have to do these types of things right now with the revenue that you have coming in. But they're out there, they're out there and if things get worse, that they're certainly at your disposal to be able to um, to be able to do. So now looking, looking uh at the projections for the next five years. Um each of the funds are going to start with uh what you just saw as of June thirtieth and then. Um estimated what we think is going to happen for the next uh five years. So for the general fund, uh we're really looking at. Property taxes is um going to go up about two percent per year. Historically, that's what's happened and so we. We do believe that's going to continue to be the um, uh continue to be the case. Uh interest earnings, we, we backed way off on an, on interest earnings and are looking really at um. In that twenty twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year at a zero point five percent. Uh portfolio rate increasing to point to three quarters of one percent, then as we get out to twenty-four, twenty-five. Finally getting back maybe to a one percent um rate. But the plan at this point in time would be, whatever money comes in in the general fund. Management would be coming back to you and all the budgets saying, we're going to transfer all of those funds out, we're going to move them over to the solid waste. For rate stabilization. Um so then looking at the solid waste fund. Here are some of the assumptions that we have going into these uh five-year projections. Are that um the annual charge here is really based on a couple of things. It's based on the uh. Uh the occupancy as well as um the increased trash rates that you've already approved. And those increased trash rates will go through fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And then uh in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, we're expecting those trash rates to be uh, uh flat. But the end, but the occupancy, we are expecting the occupancy is a, a ten-year historical information. It's gone up on average. About three quarters of one percent and where we factored that same increase into these um, into these projections. On the um, on the salaries and benefits uh side. Uh historically here, we're looking at um year-over-year increases of uh seven and three-quarters percent. That's coupled by a couple of things, merit increases of a half percent as well as cost of living. Uh increases of two and a half percent. I'm sorry, a merit increases of five percent, I might have said that wrong, and cost of living increases of two and a half percent. On your high hauler, recycling and uh organics um line item, your big contract that you've got with CRNR. Here, based upon what CNR has just done, where they've asked for a cost of living increase and you granted that. We're expecting that every other year per contract, they're going to ask for that cost of living increase again. And so we factored in a three and a half percent uh increase every other year uh in the hauler rate. Um and then in those off-years, uh given the fact that occupancy will go up, we factored in a one percent uh, uh increase. Uh recycling, uh we're estimating is going to go up about three percent a year and organics go up about five percent uh, a year in cost. Uh your operations and maintenance, just for um. Um analysis purposes, we're estimating at a five percent uh increase um uh per year. Now, included in here in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, also in the, in the operations and maintenance budget is. Your next solid waste study that you will probably need to conduct to uh set rates and so we, we factored in a forty thousand dollar cost. Of that in fiscal year uh twenty-three, twenty-four. If we go down about two-thirds of the, of the way, um right about here, if you can see my mouse moving around. Um the annual surplus deficit. So we know that we were going to dip into that um, seven hundred and forty-six thousand dollars this year. Even with the rate increases over the next two years, uh you're still going to be dipping into that uh deficit. Although it's going to be uh a little bit less each year, then you're finally going to turn the corner. With the rate increases and see some surplus coming in for a couple of years and then it's going to start going back down again. It goes back down in twenty-four, twenty-five because as of right now, there's no rate increase uh at that point in time. Uh I also wanted you to take a look at your operating reserve requirement. Uh for this year, you're at one point eight five million is your requirement and your available resources, I'm sorry. Um your one point three million dollars over that requirement right now. And so this operating reserve requirement is really based upon these three items here, the salaries and benefits, the hauler. And the O and M budget uh times your thirty percent requirement. And that gives you your operations uh operating reserve requirement. So you do have an excess, uh you're going to be okay from an operating reserve perspective. Uh it looks like for the next uh, for the next five years. Uh switching gears now to the uh wastewater fund and their five-year projections. On the annual charge, uh right now, there's no rate increases that are planned. During those five years, they're not factored in here unless, unless the board decides that they want to uh. Uh to do that. Right now, there's a one percent increase um year-over-year in the um, uh in the annual charge. Salaries and benefits, just like we talked about in the um, um in the solid waste fund. A couple, a couple of things have been built into this uh that uh. Uh Scott will be bringing to you in various year, fiscal years of budgets, but in the um. Um the twenty twenty-one budget. Uh you've already uh approved a district engineer and so you'll have that district engineer in twenty twenty-one. For about three quarters of the year and then there will be a full year in twenty-one, twenty-two. And that's uh increased the budget about forty-five thousand in twenty twenty-one and then we'll increase it by about sixty thousand and uh in twenty-one, twenty-two. Also, in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, there's a provision to do a um. A wastewater rate study at about forty thousand dollars. Uh also, uh all of these items actually are fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two in the next biennial budget that Scott will be bringing to you. Uh potentially looking at promoting a wastewater worker to a lead uh at a cost of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Hiring two wastewater maintenance workers at a cost of a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Uh purchasing a new combo cleaning truck for five hundred thousand. And uh installing some drought tolerant landscaping at HQ at a cost of about a hundred and fifty thousand. Uh all of those items are all uh included in the. Uh in this, in these five-year projections. From a capital improvement project perspective. For twenty twenty-one, this is already in your adopted budget, one point five, six, seven uh million and we just have a, a three percent increase year-over-year. Uh but right now, you do not have, I, I know you're waiting on your sewer master plan, you don't have any. Long-term projects out there or long-term identification of projects. Usually we'll, we'll have projects that are listed out to go out about five years. We don't have that, so these numbers uh potentially could change uh over the next um, the next several years. Once you get your sewer master plan and once you decide what you want to do from a long-term um perspective. Now, looking at how this fund's going to fare on the annual surplus deficit, this year, you know, we're sitting pretty good with the, with the surplus. Um starting next year, we'll have deficits that will increase um pretty substantially year-over-year, getting out to about one point two million. In fiscal year uh twenty-four, twenty-five. Um clearly showing the need for uh a couple of things to happen, either. Uh or, or a combination of both of these, either toeing the line on expenditures, tightening the belt a little bit. Um and, and probably also uh the need for some uh rate increases uh in the wastewater uh area. From an operating reserve requirement, uh you do have a twenty-five percent requirement. Uh in the wastewater fund, which is about um uh a million dollars, a little over a million dollars. You can see how that requirement grows as we um move out to twenty-four, twenty-five. Once we get to fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, you you won't have enough funds to meet your operating reserve requirement. So five years from now, there's there's definitely something between now and then. Action needs to be taken to be able to meet your operating reserve, operating reserve requirement. Or you can simply change your operating reserve requirement. That's an option that you have as well. Those are your three funds from a five-year projective. I did want to to show you how you fared over the last ten years plus those five-year projections. So going back to fiscal year two thousand ten, eleven as being the the first year, the the orange line there is the revenues, the blue line is the expenses. And so we we were, our revenues were outpacing our expenses until we got to about the thirteen, fourteen year. And then we we flipped. And at that point in time, expenses have been outpacing revenues for a number of years and all the way continuing on until your rates go into effect for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. And then we'll see that flip again to where revenues will outpace expenses. Just for a tiny period, and if we were to project that out farther, you would see that you would go negative again.
Interesting.
On the on your wastewater fund, your fifteen-year info, I I've got three lines here. Let's forget about the orange line for a second and focus only on the the blue and the red line. The blue line is your revenues and and the red line is your expenses. This is the annual budget, annual, actual annual expenses as well. And so the one big spike that you see in two thousand eighteen, that's when you bought your building on Polo Reno, and then it goes way back down again. But expenses are generally outpacing revenues on a year-over-year basis. And once we get into our estimate in the twenty twenty-one fiscal year and beyond, you'll see that expenses will continue to outpace revenues unless some action is taken by the board. That orange line brings in the fact of your CIP carryover that happens every year, where the projects can't get done. And so any of the projects that are not yet complete, we move all that money into the next year's budget. And so that line tends to help your revenues, if you will, and funding your your CIP projects to be able to have adequate funding to be able to do that. So I I wanted to show that line too, because it's it's an unusual item here for the for the wastewater fund. That really brings me to the end of what I wanted to show you from a financial perspective. I know it's a lot of information. Numbers are exciting stuff. I know. It's a lot of information, but you guys had asked for it, so I'm happy to answer any questions, as is Caitlin or or Scott that you may have.
Mark, very, very good report. And would anybody like to pose a question?
What was this? Was this an attachment?
Yeah, it should be. It should attach to the agenda item, yes. It got it got attached yesterday.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I I had, I hadn't written. Well, I appreciate it.
Yeah, very comprehensive report, and Mark, you're doing a good job. Anybody else have something?
Good report.
If I may, Mr. President, if I may ask a question to to Mark or a suggestion. So so, Mark, if you could maybe brief the board, do you have any recommendations if, what do we do if assessments do not come in? If 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 we have a catastrophic disaster or something that's that where we're not getting the revenues, what what alternatives can we do to ensure the services are continuing to continue?
Gotcha. This is this is me talking as a as an, I'm going to say, an independent third party and advisors to the board. When I see situations come in where our revenues are going to fall short of expenditures, you really have a couple of ways that you could go. The first way, which would be, in my opinion, the preferred way, is you look internally first. And and the one slide that that we had that talked about what local governments could do, this is the first place you need to go. You need to go and look at, do I need to furlough staff? Should I be deferring colas to staff? For example, I know that right now, the the cola over the February, over February year, which is what the Costa Mesa Sanitary District uses for cost of living adjustments year over year was about three point four percent roughly. That was right before all this pandemic happened. Once, once it happened, then the then the cola dropped in, if you look at March over March, it went down to one point nine five, and then it went down to zero point seven. So taking that February to February artificially in place, what's really out there right now from a cost of living perspective? So I would end up looking at that. I would end up looking at if I do have vacant positions, I wouldn't fill any of those vacant positions unless they were essential. I would go back to all of the departments and probably defer all of the travel, defer all of the training. And you guys, and they maybe have been doing this already internally, since I'm not there day in and day out, I don't know. I would look at at whether we need to do some or defer some of the maintenance activities. Now, there's a cost with doing some of these things. You know, once, once you have to start things back up and you ramp back up and you make some of these deferrals, sometimes it's going to cost a little bit more to be able to take care of what you needed to take care of at the time, if you did it right at that time. So I always would look at internally first before I would go and look at at external. The next thing to be able to do would be each year, you do have the opportunity to adjust your rates and to to increase your revenue. Increasing revenue and taxing citizens in a time of of this situation never goes over really well. So, but it is an option that you certainly can do. Finally, the third thing is there's a a financing mechanism out there called a tax revenue anticipation note or a TRAN. Not a Caitlin, but it's a tax revenue anticipation note. And and this allows governments to be able to issue debt for a one-year period of time, really to even out their revenue stream. You go through a calculation and you determine how much your allowable types of expenditures are to be able covered by this debt. You join a large pool of debt that gets issued right at the beginning of a fiscal year. You'll receive all of that money right up front in July, and then you can use that money for, excuse me, for paying your expenses throughout the year. Then at the end of June, you got to pay that debt back, and you have to pay it all. You got to pay it all back. Some agencies will just then, once they get into that habit, they will continue to roll that debt year after year after year. And we'll always end up having debt that show up on their on their books. I know that as long as I've been affiliated with the district, there's only been one time that you've ever had any real debt on your books, and that's when you were leasing your trash containers, and that didn't last for a very long period of time. So it's an option out there to be able to get through in a short period of term, but I would always look internally before you look externally.
Thank you, Mark. And just out of curiosity, are are you hearing out there or are there any local governments that are considering using TRAN?
Oh, a number of local governments have used trans, not just right now, but they but they've used those as a normal funding mechanism year over year.
Schools use them all the time.
Yeah, that's what I was getting ready to say. The school district is is the one that comes to mind. Every single year, they issue a new they issue a new TRAN.
Thank you.
Hey, Mark, this is Mike. I mean, we do have, I mean, Scott, regardless of the pandemic and if and if there are other natural disasters, other things, we do have some ability, and I agree completely with you that we need to go internally first. I mean, we need to make sure we're in good shape before we go anywhere else. But we do have federal and state funds available through FEMA and some others. If we were to have a major, you know, earthquake or a major flood or something, so there are funds like that that are out there as well, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Anybody else have a question or observation?
That was a very good report.
Very comprehensive. We've we've just got a
Very good report, and I understand it.
Use it to help us focus on where we need to be, you know? Thank you, Mark, very much for that report.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very well done.
Excellent.
And I think we'll move on now to closing items, oral communications and director comments. Anybody want to?
You know, I just remind Scott, I'd like to, I'd like to see your assessment of whether we need to reconvene the WDR committee. Its goal was to help decrease sanitary sewer overflows, and we used it, we used it well, and when when they went so low, we decided not to do that anymore.
Okay, anybody else have a comment? Appreciate all your attendance, and let's think positive. We'll see you soon. Bye-bye.
Thanks. Bye-bye. Thank you.